Please, the video is turned back on. Mister Bell, we have another.
Yes, I'm sorry to tie you guys up with these projects, but uh, the oldest cemetery in town, does anybody on the board know where it is? Sixteen sixty-one.
I'd magnolia out.
Correct. That's called cemetery?
Not cemetery, but burial.
Yeah, it's called.
Yeah.
Yeah. This year will be the ten-year anniversary that the Memorial Day Parade goes to that cemetery. And uh, I am requesting a cleanup prior to Memorial Day, which was partially done today by um, I spoke with Chuck Dan, the director, and the superintendent Sean Johnson. And they sent different people down to begin today. But there are logs in the bottom of the cemetery that are as large as my waist and been there for years. Uh, I also noticed recently in sixteen sixty-one cemetery that there was crane work and stump grinding that I was informed took three months for the request to go through for that. I've been requesting that the cemetery be cleaned up for the ten years we've been visiting it. For three months, ten years. Somewhere in there is an even balance. But uh, if there's any way that you guys could help with that project, I would greatly appreciate it. In two thousand fourteen, I had an Eagle Scout use that burial grounds as a Eagle Scout project. And him and his family and other scouts came and cleared it out. That cemetery was high and rable in two thousand fourteen. Below what you can see from the road, there's a double wall in the cemetery. That double wall is quite perfect to the history of this community. I'm not gonna go into what it is and everything that's going on there. But that cemetery gave some attention. The last time it was worked on before today was when I did the cleanups in the front of it on Memorial Day since two thousand fourteen. So if there's any way I can get some support from you guys and girls to uh pay respect to those that started the community, I would greatly appreciate it.
Thank you. Um, Becky?
I think it's a valuable ask and important, however, we we don't um, staff does not fall under our purview um in any way. That's uh, we can certainly ask, we can ask. But but I just want people to know that we we don't have control over paid employees. That's town administrator um and the people who head up those departments. But I I think we certainly could ask, there's no harm in that. So long as we're going to the limitations.
Like I said today, you worked in that cemetery, what you can see from the road. But there needs to be chainsaw work where the cemetery dips and the wall doubles done by Jeffrey's break. So if you could see a way fit to.
Oh, I don't.
Yeah, you've been in touch, Chuck, Chuck knows what's going on.
Yes. I don't know if he knows about what went on today. I'm sure he was involved in it somehow. But I don't think he's been up there to see it. Because if you go to the edge, that'll look good.
Okay. Well, as Becky says, that's really probably between Greg and uh, Chuck, that kind of all right, was the priority gonna be and you're looking at Memorial Day, right?
I'm requesting, I'm hopefully requesting.
But there is an event, this the parade, this Memorial Day Parade will go there.
The Memorial Day Parade has been changed this year for those of you that don't know it. They will be going up School Street from the West Side Service, the Rosedale Cemetery, and back down School Street, stopping at Union Cemetery on the way down to the post. Then from the post, the motorcade will lead to Pine Street, Magnolia Avenue, Kettle Cove, and sixteen sixty-one cemetery, and then return to the post. That's new this year.
That seems like a very sensible change, given the age of some of the people who march.
Yeah.
Um, I think we can agree that that's a good thing to do and we will ask town administrator to suggest to um the DPW that they look beyond the first um, the front of the of that cemetery and and clean it up.
Or at least remove the lawns. Thank you very much. Sorry to tie you guys up.
Okay, the, is there anyone else who has public comment on anything not on the agenda? Um, there is no chairman's report. What we do, what we look at next is the action items. And I think we have all of the action items for that were listed for today are on our agenda. Are there any other action items that we would like to add for other meetings?
Um, I've probably had something with regard to category. June, July, well, with regard to like transportation.
Kate Bass Association Association and what? Just just because there are lots of people listening, what what are you asking for?
Uh, Kate Batta has a transportation, a Cato on demand that they can provide to seniors. Now, we certainly have a lot of vans here that aren't necessarily available all the time, but a service that they will provide, uh, if you call them, is for two dollars, they will take seniors anywhere. And sometimes we just do not, while we have vans, we don't always have drivers and this can kind of supplement the service that we have. Again, it's Monday to Friday, the same kind of times. But um, we have a lot of here in town for the seniors, there are a lot of big trips going to Market Basket, et cetera. Vans aren't necessarily available to go where someone might want to go and add box by themselves. And this is this would be handy.
Thank you.
At no cost.
Okay. Anybody else?
Yeah, just on one of the existing actions, the the North Shore Regional Review. Greg, what's the holdup in getting something scheduled?
Um, I'm just giving you a front, I think she's ready to be general to her.
Of me?
Of me. I'm just double checking, I think that's what she has.
Nothing else? The next item on our agenda is the Welcome to Manchester by the Sea event. They hope this year.
Um, thank you all. Um, my name is Hope Waupuji Tupukinport. Um, with Leslie, Biddy, and Christine, Mantra, and Barbara, AKA, we are in the welcoming. From Manchester by the Sea. And so uh, we're asking, we're here before the board today, this evening, asking if uh you would approve, what we'd like to do is having Manchester by the Sea Community Call. Very simple, welcoming community call, very similar to our uh um winter events, our holiday event. Um, we would like to use the library lawn, the historical society lawn, and read part if necessary. So the purpose of this is to welcome all residents, both current and future, and have the businesses open. We would have like a stamp book type of uh procedure where you go to different businesses and those businesses or entities or organizations or private entities that don't have storefronts would be located on the library lawn as a historical uh commission lawn or the park. And you would go around and just learn more about our town, learn more about our businesses and our organizations, do get your uh little card point scanned, and then there would be a rack of accolades uh from all the businesses who are pre-ses of fifty. We asked for this on July thirteenth, which is a Saturday, from ten to two P M. And the Parks and Recreation by Yusufah Shero have approved our application for this one.
Questions, John?
I think it's a good idea.
One question, I think a wonderful idea. Um, curious as to why uh the July thirteenth date was selected? I mean, stay away from July four, we may have to go to the summer when the most people are looking to be in the towns. But just, I think it's probably fine, I would ask you to consider keeping in mind, um, you know, when we have attended Chamber of Commerce meetings, they're always looking for events on what they call the shoulder seasons, like spring and fall. So um, we should great success on July thirteenth, but if there's some way of also engaging with the school on the shoulders, I would say, I'd appreciate it.
Absolutely. We figured there's already winter and holiday one that occurs, and so we wanted to really have it during the season when the most people are wanting to be in Manchester by the Sea. Encourage them to all enjoy our our beautiful sounds, I think, to be done maybe more than once. I I think that's a really nice idea. Um, have you have you spoken with anybody at either the um historical? I believe our chairperson, Leslie Biddy, who is unable to be here to see the post on that. Again, have you spoken with any of the the business members or and their interested in this as well? I think it's a really nice idea um to introduce people.
My my opinion of it is is that we don't have control over the library lawn or the historical society or the businesses. So that's.
Probably not even.
Yes.
I I do have another question. Typically, um, when an organization is asking for permission, uh Greg, and this might be something you can answer, typically they have to have insurance. How will that in this case? Uh, it's.
Hopefully it's a term. Yeah, so it's.
Do you like the moment?
Yes.
I'm moved that the Select Board approves the Welcome to Manchester Committee's street crawl crawl event on July thirteenth, May twenty-four, from ten A M. to two P M.
Second.
Is Brian?
Okay.
Calls.
Yes.
Answers yes. Second, yes. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Have a great event.
You too.
Thank you.
Thank you, Russell.
Thanks, Sarah. Okay. The next on our on our agenda is an appointment, the Appointment Policy Review. And there are several parts to this. The first part is that we need to modify the policy. Because it does not include the Z B A as one of the semi-judicial. Um, so um, ordinarily, when we modify a policy, it's apparently a life of procedure, but I think this time we could just, I have a motion to add the Z B A to the list of um boards that have quasi-judicial authority for finance responsibilities. So.
Second.
All in favor, or not all in favor, so do this. Becky?
Yes.
At least Anne says yes.
Anne said yes.
Anne said yes. The second problem is that raised by um Sarah Melish, which is that um appointments are running right to the edge. And there, I think there are, there needs to be a longer-term solution, but I think we also may need to do something in the short term to to get the Z B A up up to um.
Yeah. I I think the intent, um, I don't think, I know that our intent was to keep from positions um where it seems people are just very given that they get to stay there. Now, while we're always appreciative of anybody, it's important that um anybody who they have the opportunity if they want. So um, I wonder if um there's a way to back it up to where the chairs who reach for the Select Board reaches out to chairs several months in advance or somehow there's a formula knowing when a term is up. So that it can be determined if that person is still on the council.
Yeah, I think there's a difference between the policy and the implementation of the policy. They're different things. I think the policy is fine. However, the um, when you're transitioning to, you know, a change, you've got to think about the implication on each committee, because like we discussed previously, you could have the whole committee for, you know, their terms coming up at the same time, you don't want an empty committee, right? So I think there's the um, the act of implementing the committee and implementing the policy. I do think people look at each committee by committee, and I guess I'm I'm not there on exactly what communication went out to the chairs. I know something was communicated, but that's not the board's responsibility to implement all of those um details. I'm just not clear on what has been done, but it's not.
The the new policy, the way we put it together, I think after two terms, just want to see if there's somebody out there that might be interested. Um, I don't know if we ever got data on how many terms are up or how many terms are up with two terms or more people. There were fifty-six people whose terms expire in two thousand twenty-four, yes, you were. I mean, a lot of people have been on those committees more than two years. Did you look at that? I don't remember how many that was.
Can I ask?
Well, it seems to me that we really have to.
Oh, that's right.
Reply.
Reply, yeah. It seems to me that we 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 should reach out to people if they're interested in joining committees much further in terms than we ought. Okay, and find out if somebody's going to reply to that, because if somebody's on, going to be on a committee, and then there are quite a few people that have been on some committees for three and four terms and outing. But I think you have to know if there's been an expression of interest, if anybody wants to get on, and then the chair, then it's the chairperson's problem.
So I.
Figure out what they're gonna do.
John, yes, absolutely. I think, you know, there's a clear deadline for um when we um take a seat, right? It's it's based on our fiscal calendar, et cetera. But operationally, you need to back up, right, when you send out communications. And I don't think that calendar has been clearly identified, and I'm not clear if it's something this board needs to do or Greg and his team need to do that as far as their, you know, role in managing the committees. We, um, that's where my lack of clarity is.
Well, if I I think, I mean, all of them come up on June thirtieth, and if you start to push something out in the newspaper and say, starting in front of our march and say, we need to know by the end of March if anybody out there is interested. Or or the first of April. And then after that point, if if nobody comes back, you can go to the chairs and say, yeah, so-and-so, these people, their terms are up, they've been there for three, four terms. Nobody's expressed an interest, you can chat with that person and say, hey.
Right. I just don't, when when you talk about managing resources, this is not something I think needs to be put into on those plates. Um, I I just.
Well, we did, we did establish Debbie as as the uh conduit for all things communicating, you know, to the committees. That is some of the responsibility, and I'm just not clear what is, I didn't actually see the communication, but can't comment.
No, I sent, I sent out the new appointment policy to all the chairs in like March. I would have looked at them, yeah. And I sent all the um reappointments out the last week in April.
Okay.
So there's, it's out there that people, I asked them if they wanted to be reappointed.
So that was Saturday?
Yeah.
So um, and the responses were?
Yes, slowly coming in.
Slowly coming, do you give them a deadline?
No, I did not.
Okay.
No.
My my suggestion is you never ask anyone to do something without letting know when we need it by, right? So I would definitely redo those communications, but I would personally find it helpful if you could send the communication to at least me, I don't know if others would be interested. I would like to see the actual communication that went out to the chairs of of those boards, because as a liaison, I can help reinforce the committees. I liaise them and like, hey, did you get this communication? Did you understand it? And I just don't know this off.
Okay. And that's a good point, because the the liaison is not just to simply listen and bring information back. But I think we do have to be um cautious um in that role representing, right?
Yeah, it's only about just clarifying, making sure they received it, if they have any question. But I think.
Would would it be appropriate to send out another communication with a deadline of, say, the twentieth of May?
Yeah.
So that we can people know. And and.
Yep.
So we have the whole month in June to sort out um whether there are new applicants and and whether everyone wants to.
Sarah's still squeezed here. She's got a couple of resignations. She's got some people that are up at the end of terms and.
Yes.
Figure out those.
And and I think we should encourage whoever puts out that sort of communication to get information in the cricket, particularly on positions that are going to be vacant.
Yeah, right.
Because if that's got people to, she'll have vacancy.
Yes, we didn't even know, I didn't.
Right, but but that, I don't think we're going to have a stampede of of people who's.
Not a stampede, but it's.
But we need to get in the habit. We need to get. And and if anyone knows anyone who would be good on the Z B A, we would like, please encourage them to do it. It's a very important function in the town. Um, and and um, it can't function unless it's supposed. Okay, so I think I think there's still time to sort out the the uh uh situation for the Z B A, particularly if Tiffany gets it on the on the side at the time.
Social media.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Okay. Um, so I I gather no one thinks we need to change the policy except for adding this.
Implementation.
Yes. Okay. Fine, um. Because I hope I haven't stifled any comment on that subject. Okay. The next on the agenda um is the parking discussion, and the first part is um non-resident mooring holders. And we have a letter from uh Betsy Ware um and the current policy, I believe, is is that long-term or mooring, non-resident mooring holders who want long-term parking and spend up to three days in Tux Point. And thereafter, um, they need to find someplace else to park. Um, there are, I've established a number of parking places that are good, and recommendation was that um, the time on those be changed from um morning until six to morning until midnight. Who are the ones here at and behind town hall. I have sent an email to the school suggesting that the upper parking, that they might be able to make a little bit of money renting the upper parking lot for people who need need a week, more than three days parking. Part of the reason I don't want long-term parking more than three days in Tux Point is that it's a grass lot. And if somebody parks there for a week or more, it's going to be hard on the grass. And that grass suffers a lot anyway. So finding a spot where non-residents can't park for a long time is a priority if the school is interested. I think they deserve something for using their lot as the advantage of being controlled, lighted, and there are cameras. So Tux Point, as you probably know, is sometimes used for youthful drinking. The police are addressing that, but it's it's a place where there's a risk of vandalism, more risk than at the school. Other spots that Greg has suggested are the spots on Lincoln Street, opposite the school, um, just one other which escapes from, but trying to keep it off um populated streets.
Coach Field Field.
Oh, right, Coach Field Field, the Brook Street parking lot. So we're looking for a place, yeah, go ahead.
That, the the concern with the Coach Field Field is that there are public courts there that people use, and I I I think that um I think if arrangements are made for the school, I I also don't think that that the town should be intermediary. I I think that that's between the school and whomever wants to leave a vehicle there. But that's not, I don't think that's um.
Just thinking that this it may not, might not occur to the school, since they have a new director of facilities, that that this is something that they might be able to do, can't.
And I think that's an excellent solution. It's further away than the.
And it's not, the the town is not um responsible for vehicle泊停.
I'm 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 a little more generous. I think Tux Point for a week is okay. I don't know exactly how many cars are involved, but to park there for a week, I think is all right. There's got to be a spot, you know, in some corner, under some trees where not much grass grows anyway. And a a lot of people, they are bakers for a week or something, and I think that that is is okay. I hope something works out with the schools that's good. And I would think that even the beach bums could provide transportation in the summer, if that works out. That phone number can be available, get, come back down the uh, down to the town lot. The other thing, but that's for long-term, long-term parking. For daily parking, and I know there's still a squeeze here. And I'm wondering what's going on with Norwood and or Coach Field for just daily parking, if you want to go out. Because right now, I mean, out of town people have the slots along the fence, that's it. Forty percent of voters are out of town.
Is that, is that verified? Has that been, is that?
What?
I mean, that that are forty percent?
Yes.
Yes.
So that's, that's, I think that's.
So that's interesting, though, we have that many. Um, and yet we only sell eighty-three or eighty-two or eighty-three parking. Right, but but, I mean, that's been that number for quite some time, and just with some of these limitations, we're having a small amount of pushback on that. Um, and I I do think that's significant, that we're not having a wholesale uprising. So I I just think that it's important to weigh equally what we're hearing.
The one, the one thing with regard to placards is they aren't necessarily out-of-town placards. There are people that want to placard so they can park next to the chainline fence. And I don't know what that split is. I think we did ask Diane a month ago, we said, well, how many placards? I'm not sure she tracks that.
That's interesting. I thought the placards were for not residents, people, residents can park in.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, I owned a placard. I I owned a placard for three years.
I I know.
And I decided it wasn't worth it.
Interesting piece of data. I would be interested in learning about how we also wholesale change it. I mean, how many of the placards go in that?
You stop jacking it up to a hundred bucks.
Round check. All right, all right, that's the Ryan, please.
Um, what about, and I think Sweetie Park, right, the.
Good point, Sweetie Park.
Good point, Sweeney Park. I maybe you should turn off your video.
Now there's Sweeney Park, there is.
Spot. Oh, we're concerned that there were events at Sweeney Park where there.
There's not a lot of parking.
And and there are at least two events that regularly build Tuck's Point.
I I can think John brings up a very important point, I I was mistaken, I thought the placards were so that residents could have a place to park, but there are residents using that vehicle to just get those space that seems.
Yes. It was also, it was my impression also that that the non-resident placards were for non-residents and not for residents, because I mean, they. Right. Greg? Would you check with Diane and see if she gives voting placards to residents and think that's not our policy, that that's not our intent.
We need to change the policy, we should look at it anyway, but it was our intent to allow residents to vote.
Don't really. Well, it's not, this is, okay, this is, this is not a very few, this is a, this does not happen.
Right, we want to have a number zero.
Are there comments from people in the audience? Yes.
Mark Strauss, PD, had been a non-resident mooring holder since about nineteen eighty-nine. Just wanted to mention regarding your comment on the grass at Tuck's Point. The parking lot seems to be pretty well defined with big boulders as well as the setback system or sewer. And it seems that the grass is not growing in the parking lot. Are you thinking about expanding the parking lot to a grass area?
In fact, in the in the summer, the grass area is used for parking. It's, it has, it has been for years. And for years, kids with trucks came through and tore it up. And and the DPW figured out after having their fence stolen, that putting the boulders out kept it from happening in the winter. Yes, there's a lot more parking than just the gravel area at Tuck's.
So, but that confusion, is there any improvement in the signage that's needed? So that people clear where they can park or?
Oh, they 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 moved four boulders and. It's and and there's a sign at each entry, at each entrance.
People find, for sure. And the voting placards can be used anywhere or is there a special special section at Tuck's?
We haven't created a special section.
Okay, so any of us in Placard can park anywhere at Tuck's?
Yes.
That's quite a lot of spaces.
It's a lot of spaces.
We got twelve out here. Twelve out here. And full parking lot, that's, I I don't know.
Well, we we dawned suggested increasing the time that they can spend from three days to seven. And maybe we should look at this again after we've looked for places that are paved. Yes, please, again. Mark Strauss. Diane is.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Diane. Yes, Diane, please. Unmute yourself. I'm very concerned.
Okay, thank you, thank you guys. Hi, everybody. Sorry you can't see me. As far as the voting placards, the policies have never said non-resident or resident. I think in the past, since I've been here, residents were purchasing them so they could park closer to the boat ramp. But since the price has gone up, I don't believe that any resident has. Greg, did you mute me in the middle of that? Hi, I'm not sure if anyone can hear me. I was told I sound weird. Can you hear me now? I'm sorry. You're all looking towards me, but I can't hear you at all.
I would agree in the sense that, yeah, you are taking a space with the DA. Non-resident spot.
If we have a squeeze right now for non-residents, not that we have access, then. No, convenience and there's access, I think we've been a little student, but.
Right.
A little decisions of policy, so. That might be a decent fix. Diane? How things have been so far? Diane, can you hear me? Diane?
I can, I can hear you now.
Okay, that sounds much better, Diane, thank you. We were wondering if you are currently issuing voting placards to residents of Manchukin.
So off the top of my head, I do not know that. All I request to get a voter placard is proof of payment for a mooring. I do not believe that anyone currently is a resident that has a voter placard.
So we, I think we have, before you could hear us, we have asked for that data because our intent as a board that the voting plaque.
So your sound just went down a little bit, but on the policy, it doesn't call it a non-resident placard, it's just called a voter placard. But I will look into the, I think I have twenty-one out. So far, I will check those twenty-one mooring owners and get back to you in a day or so through Debbie and Greg, whether they're residents or not.
There's only, so thus far this year, there have only been twenty-one voter placards issued?
Correct.
And how many, how many are issued in a typical year?
Eighty.
Eighty?
I think it was about eighty, yes, I don't have the information with me, I wasn't prepared for that.
I have a question. With with the the voting actors, I just want to go back to what you were saying. If a resident wants to park all day long, where do they park the placards for all day long?
Back half of the.
Back half of the lot. Side street, we have resident parking on the lower plane. Along of the side streets along the center.
I I'm just.
Yeah.
I'm just wondering if we need this up because you know, we want to make sure that everybody.
Yeah, I believe the residents, most of the residents parking in the residential neighborhoods, they're not fine restricted because the residential parking is needed for people who live there. And there's all in Tuck's Point and all Tuck's Point, so I mean, there should be plenty of parking.
And now we have a lot.
And now we have a lot.
We have a lot.
Yeah.
So. Um, yes, sir.
And Mark Strauss and PD. I just wanted to mention regarding your comment about signage. Uh, signage would be required, right now, I believe at Tuck's Point, there's no signage that's talked about overnight parking. Or resident stickers required. So.
Diane, there is a resident sticker. Yes.
Is that the portable one that they set up?
No, it's the big wooden one that's kind of looking. Looks like a set.
Okay, yeah. Okay, so definitely signage would be required. But for the voter placard signage, if you put it on the dirt section of the parking lot or how many spaces, then we don't have to worry about the grass getting burnt. So that's that's one way to get around.
Thank you, thank you. Dirt part is the most heavily used part and that that area is heavily used by people who are having parties with the chairman of the house. So I think it would be better for one or even three days to park back in the in the far side.
Okay, well, we can make it in the back section.
Yeah. Excuse me, I think we have a motion open, we have not voted on to clarify into the parking policy that voter placards are for non-resident mooring holders. Becky?
Yeah.
It was.
Yes.
And says yes, so. So could we communicate that to Diane if you could say? That's more.
Okay. Ms. Ware. That's Southberg name. And a couple of concerns. The discussion about Tuck's Point. In the past years, Tuck's Point has been unlimited amount of parking and now it's being limited to streets. I think to go from one extreme to the other extreme is warrants review. Secondly, if the schools are not willing to offer longer term parking, then I memo to Greg Sondersfield was considering both streets that are further out from the downtown. I specifically didn't consider the area near the tennis courts and the and the ball field at Norwood and Brook because I know that's heavily used. Sweeney has a lot of ball games going on and, so. And I also specified potentially this gravel lot at Home Station that could be considered. And also, there's public streets that, for example, as a street extension. So if those could be considered. Also, I am representing myself as a non-resident boat owner. My partner, Robert Levens, I am not making any representations regarding bakers.
Thank you. I I firstly, I think we should explore the school first and look at other places later. We will report back on this again. And I, yes, sorry, Becky, sorry, I didn't mean to cut you off, Becky.
No, I I just think that I don't think that this is necessarily something we as a board need to solve. I think that that we are offering voter placards and there are places to park. I don't think that it's our responsibility to provide parking for anybody. I just don't think that's what we're supposed to do or what we should be doing. And no one, somebody wrote in a letter that they didn't think people were voters. Well, I I think everybody on this board is a voter. So we do understand accessing votes. We provide a mooring for a fee. We provide a placard for a fee. I I I don't think that we have to provide everybody with a space to park. I just don't, that's not. We don't provide a space for every single person in town.
Yes, sir.
Robert Levens, Southberg, man. I just wanted to make a simple clarification because I don't think it's been adequately addressed in the discussion. Maybe I'm just missing something. But in all of the suggestions, who, the suggestion is only applicable to placard holders, not to any other people to do the same. So I just, I don't think that's been adequately addressed in the discussion, that's all. Because people might be worried that it could be available to anybody, but what I'm just talking about, I don't know what other people are talking about. I'm only talking about with people with voter placards, out of sound voter placards.
Thank you. Are there any other comments before we move on to the topic? Yes, sir.
Yeah, regarding the comment about the board shouldn't be involved in the voter placards.
That's not what I said.
Okay.
And please repeat your name and address.
Mark Strauss, PD.
Just we have to have that.
I understand.
That's that's not what I said.
Okay.
I said, we do not have to guarantee, it's not our responsibility to guarantee every person a spot.
Correct. Nor do you have to restrict non-resident mooring holders from being able to access their their votes.
Okay, I think we we have agreed that we will wait for here whether the school is willing and if if there's, if the school is not willing, we will do what we can to provide. do what we can to provide long-term parking and to the it will be discussed again. Thank you. Um. The next question is long-term parking on Norwood Avenue, at the Norwood Avenue parking lot. And um there had been some spaces that were available for people to park for months. And um in resolving the need for parking in the downtown, the Norwood Parking Lot is one of the places where um people who work in town and park believe the immediate downtown parking available for um shoppers and customers. And this is on our agenda, I assume, because someone thinks it's a one that I don't know.
Right. So you talked about the rescinding.
Yes. Uh huh.
Right, but there was never a fight.
Oh, okay.
So if, if you got to prioritize
Yes, true.
discussion about rescinding that we just allow you know, it's long-term parking definition. Right, so, so you can allow a week
Would you like a month?
Of parking, right, fine. But multiple weeks would, would not be allowed. We would use special platters, you know. Put special permissioned, both.
I would like to select the, the motor issue of the voter placard policies. Oh, it's wrong, sorry. I knew the board eliminate long-term parking at the Norwood Avenue parking.
Sorry.
Long-term defines what?
If you want to.
Yes, it is, thank you.
Okay. Second.
No, multi-week or not.
Okay. Second.
I seconded it, okay. Is there, is there discussion? John?
Yes. No.
Okay. Don't you see us? I'm, I will say yes, I think you.
Yes.
Okay, so that's why I find that. Um, the. How can you talk about big spots? Okay, the next topic is people they, people who are having a big use discussion.
Okay, um can I just ask not that there not be little sites? It's very distracting hearing all the sidebars going on. Um, I think that we have had um a lot of proponents for the pickleball boards. I think that we have visited and revisited to make sure that a small number of people have been heard. I think it's equally as important that the proponents who are vastly, greatly outnumbered the opponents, he felt that they're heard as well. I think that, that the town voted for this. The town voted to support the um sound mitigations. And I, I think it's time to just put it to bed. We've gone over this. We've spent inordinate amount of time. And just because somebody is not happy, one, two, three people are not happy, they should not have more voice than many, many people who are very happy. Um but I, I just think that we need to say enough about parks and rec have been doing, spending over backwards to try to accommodate and the police department has been more than accommodating as well. Um, I just think it's done.
John?
I'd like to hear from Cheryl on an update.
Yeah, I was gonna say, same thing. So at, an update to our previous meeting.
Okay.
For the emails. Yeah, what, what else is down? If I don't track your work last time, we had friends send it um during the month of April. They opened on April 1st. And said extended a week or two later up to the twelve feet and we're awaiting the soundproofing um material that should be by the end of May for the twelve foot barriers. Feel amazing?
All right. So until that time, I know we agreed that the times of operation are truncated a little bit, I think nine AM, seven.
Right.
Rather than nine AM to when the sun sets.
Okay, and I, and I believe, yeah, that's a um temporary until.
Yes, until that time. So that's still expected a month out.
I don't think, yeah, exactly. I haven't had any um like of sound since the course have opened this season. Um and we have volunteers opening and closing the course every day and every night. So we know there's no use outside of the posted hours. Um, the players are doing everything they can to try to make it better for the neighborhood. Granted, occasionally there might be a small parking issue that happens, but um mistakes happen in um in general, I would, even small break.
Do you, do you have a, you probably should put up some sort of a sign. Parking really in general is, it's Sweeney for that.
Right.
Is there a sign there that says you should park at Sweeney if you're gonna play on the course? Okay.
So um it sounds like we're gonna, soundproofing will be implemented in a few weeks. Um is there a schedule that has somebody coming back and vigor the sound? See if it's effective. What was the date of? Yeah, the company that is um putting up the sound, um a week or so before and on some sound tests. Okay. And then you'll also do it a few days after. A few days after. So we're really talking within a month, we should know whether or not the soundproofing will work. Right. So to John's point, I, I don't know that there's much we can do at the point. We, we have a plan. We should implement a plan and see if it's effective. I will say that when it comes to the blocking of people's driveways, I used to live in a place where my driveway was blocked, so I have zero confidence for that. I gotta be, it's, it's not an inconvenience. Okay? So I appreciate that um the police officer, I think in this particular situation handled it well and uh gave the person a warning, but blocking someone's driveway that they can't get out, to me, that's not a small issue. Um based on personal experience, I, I, I thought that does not happen. I do, I would like to see the police either, you know, first time, a warning's fine, but um that, that's not a small issue. I will admit that. Right, but I haven't wanted a mistake. Yeah. Dealt with.
Well, additionally though, that one of the residents over there has been, has been given orange cones by the police. So to try to assist in this and well, then put out front. So I'm just saying that, that to that, the point of parking, yes, that was not appropriate. The way it was handled was awful, was horrible.
Yeah.
Unacceptable.
Yeah.
And that person that again has even been given orange cones for, for helping with their parking.
Well, like I said, I, I think I'm not, I, I just feel that parking is a different issue than the soundproofing. I, I.
Yeah.
And block somebody's driveway, I, I shouldn't need to put any special cones or anything in front of my driveway so that people don't block it. People should just not block it. And I just think it's a separate issue. So um I, I do think the police officer handled it well. The resident did not. And that was uh just uncalled for, but um having been in that situation personally, it's, it's not a small issue. So that applies that.
Would it be possible for the police to put up temporary signs saying that um all along Forest Street on the side where the parking was allowed? Um saying no pickleball parking rather than just two cones for one driveway.
See, I only, I interrupt you just a minute. I don't think people understand that the board speaks first and that's typically we talk with each other and then the chair will recognize people who wish. So if you're standing there, don't, it's not that you're being ignored. But it's just usually this discussion happening.
Thank you.
Good. I think we should just move ahead as per plan.
I, I, I think some signage on Forest Street.
There are those cones and there was a sign that said no pickleball on two occasions. And I gotta believe most pickleball players or repeat players at this point in time, they understand the issue.
Yeah.
They park in the right place.
But maybe it would be better if no one parked in front of the place. Um, have you discussed this? Who hopes?
Yeah.
Sure, I'm just on the parking. Um so that one resident answered if it could be no pickleball parking, so that why the cones are there. Other residents have no problem with pickleball parking or they have their own friends and people who want more than parks, so they allow it. So therefore, the cones are only in front of that one house.
Okay, in that case, I'm withdrawing.
Amen.
Yes, please.
Uh Shaw Daly, funny borrow through, also on the Chair of the Park and Rep Committee. Uh regarding the parking signs, I, I really don't know how that person is allowed to get two signs for their personal, I mean, it's one of those, can I get two signs in front of my house?
Yeah.
And the reason I say that is, I can park in front of her house. If I go to the Paul Nation Park, personally, I'm okay. If I go fishing, I'm okay. If I go to the basketball courts, I'm okay. If I go to softball or baseball, I'm okay. But if I walk in that court, I gotta move my car. That makes no sense at all as far as in that.
Yeah.
I don't, I'm, I'm probably speak, most people borrow through. No one else wants these parking signs. I don't know why they're there or appeasing one person. It's free to park. It's resident parking. They should be there. There are plenty of people. They'd be allowed.
Thank you. Yes, please.
Mary on under ten six Forest Street. So I live directly next door. And the police are being called on my children's friends playing with my children. So they're at my house for a sporting event or having lunch or playing pickle. It's my house. I pay taxes. It's in front of my house. It's resident parking. Everyone pays taxes to park in residence spots. If I live on Forest Street and Laura lives and everyone on Forest is saying, we do not want it to be no pickleball parking. It's one person that is calling when it's not pickleball season. That is calling and having cars ticketed for friends of mine, for cleaning ladies, non-pickleball. It's calling the police because my kids are in the backyard. It's a calling the police for everything. It is not related to pickleball only. It's empowering somebody because they're getting their way on everything. On my family because my kids are playing pickleball and their friends are coming over. I had called the police to tell them they were having team dinner at my house because she's calling the police on kids coming over for team dinner for one hour. It's not fair. It's harassment. She's screaming at boys, young boys. It, it's a prop. One time parking a little bit in front of her driveway was an accident. No one's trying to be manipulative. No one's trying to be hurtful. But what's happening to me is hurtful and it's harassment to all of these people. This is harassment and it's not fair. And she's getting away with it and being encouraged to keep doing it.
Um, I'm, I'm sorry that we, is, is, I mean, Mark, wait, is on? Is he still on? Yes, you. Um, I just, I, not that I'm asking who to weigh in, but it, it, it sounds like that this is not a pickleball issue. This is an issue of um disgruntled residents.
Yes.
And I think that this needs to be perhaps addressed through the police department. And I, because I don't, I'm just saying if there's somebody who keeps calling, I think that's not our.
Yeah, no, I, I agree. I, I don't think it's necessarily a select for the issue and not even sure that's a law enforcement is about criminal complaints, right? So I'm wondering if this is more of a civil um.
Well, the thing is, the police department keeps getting caught by this person. Maybe the police department needs to have a discussion.
Yeah.
But that's not for us. I think that, that we should not be penalizing all the people who really want this. And I, I agree that I don't think that we should be having no pickleball parking there. If, if you're a town resident, you've got a sticker and you can park in resident parking.
Or whatever reads.
Or whatever reads.
You know, and I agree that has to go to the police level because it does become harassment and if you're getting calls and ninety percent of the time, pickleball's got nothing to do with it.
Exactly.
And I.
And you know, that, so that really becomes a
Right.
police have to deal with it.
But this is, this, this has taken a lot of time on many people's parts. And I think it's time to just stop giving.
And make a suggestion. So we have an outstanding action, right? We are going to uh put it on our action item list to review the sound. I, I think we have a one outstanding action. Soundproofing is gonna get installed. We should review as a board the results of the tests performed after the soundproofing. I think that's our only intention.
But, but what in?
I know.
Yeah, so it can enter.
But, I mean, but I think this board should at least be informed. We're spending money. We're spending our money and I do think we have a fiduciary responsibility if nothing else. To see if the money we spent was effective or not.
We do.
I'm not saying that's, that's, and that's the limit that I'm.
That's what I was gonna say. This, this shouldn't be, uh, okay.
We're not managing neighbor disputes here.
No, but if somebody says, oh, we were promised however many decibels and it falls short by one, two, or whatever, I, I just.
I agree, but all I'm saying is we took an action. We're spending town money. We have fiduciary responsibility to review the results of the money we spent. And then we can deliberate to see if there's any other action taken or not. That's the end of it. And then I don't want to give the work things.
But I'd still get to say, come play pickleball.
There you go. On my honeymoon.
Yes, please.
Uh yeah, Doha Ross, one, when the mayor park is sentenced, I sent two quick points. I appreciate all that Becky said with regards to uh it's been a long road the past year. I've attended several parks and rec meetings uh and heard multiple viewpoints on pickleball. Um and if, um we flip it around for one second and just think about when this was approved by the town um and what I'll call the return on investment that the town made to create the pickleball courts has been immense and a massive success. And so nobody talks about that. We just like to complain and it's too loud and all this stuff. Even though it's closed for four to five months and even though there's limits on time and there's no lights down there and whatever else. So I think Cheryl, her committee deserves you know, a, a massive um round of applause for just getting it up and getting it being used by all ages. Um kids, grandkids, everybody in between, like it's a great success. Um I do have a concern though, from what I'm hearing, that once that sound mitigation study is done, it's the before and the after. I don't know what you're expecting for a result that will make you um close the door on this topic because we've been going around and around and there's constantly like adjustments being made for a very small number of people. I don't think the entire town is aware of all the little things that are happening. And I do believe if it was brought up at town meeting, that there would be a interesting response, I'll say, to um if someone knew all of the stuff that's been going on. But I'm just making sure that this is not going to, the sound mitigation, whether it's one percent better or twenty-five percent better or fifty.
So.
I don't know what you're expecting, but I'm worried.
So let me, may I clarify when?
For sure.
Certainly. It's just basic follow-up. Okay, we, we, we're gonna, we, we're doing what we said we were going to do and that was my point. We're gonna, we're gonna measure before the soundproofing. We're spending the town's money and we're gonna see if there's any difference. Quite frankly, if there's no difference, I wanna go back to the soundproofing company and saying, what did we waste our money on? Give us our money back. So for me, it's just good follow-up. When you spend the town's money, you should understand whether or not you spent it wisely and not go back to the soundproofing people and say, you know, give us our money back. That, that's where my perspective is. I'm not looking to meet a particular decibel level um.
Then why was it under money if you didn't know what you were trying to get?
There was a reduction, but I think there was some um um uncertainty as to what the exact deduction was going to be with soundproofing, unless I'm not remembering correctly.
Yeah, the company has presented here that their product will bring it down to the level that is instead of exception.
Does that define acceptable?
Yes, but there's two.
And sure.
Okay.
So and if they don't. So, and if they don't, right, do we have some recourse, can we get our money back?
We have money back there.
Okay, so that, that's the reason, you can basic follow-up, and if you didn't get what you paid for, you get your money back, that's my point.
Yes, uh, Dawn Bailey, my borrower, just a follow-up, I just wondered, for it's kind of done. Uh, direction, who do we speak to about the, the two parking signs, getting rid of those? I mean, so you're saying, you know, the select board's not involved in that, is that the chief of police, is that the town, this rate, or is that the TPW? Who do we go to skip to, talk about getting those removed?
Go ahead, who wants to ask them?
Sure, I've got, I've got, I'm gonna start with eight, please, please, something.
Yes, okay.
Great, San Lake Avenue. Um, I'm actually, I live near Manchester High here. I do my score project, I don't know if you're familiar with that, we do a TV service, uh, for quarter four, the end of our senior year. And, um, I was actually talking to one of the tech detectives after, um, I was part of one of the incidents at a pickleball course, um, at my friend's house, and it was parking. And these signs were put up, uh, the day that I got there. And then I went back, and I went down to the police station, uh, to my score project, and the police, uh, one of the detectives, detectives I was talking to actually uh, said that the police force wasn't aware of the signs, they were saying that the TPW put those, put those up, and I know that you guys have mentioned earlier that, um, that it was up to the police. But, but detective, I, I guess the detective on duty, the, um, other officers on duty weren't aware.
In my recollection, when the pickleball courts went in, I particularly noticed that a caller asked him for that, and there had been signs that said, no skateboard parking. Also, cheaper police felt like precedent had been set, and we asked, TPW took them out. This year, we just forgot until, um, came on last, put their name on, after parking, it's been finding them. But, but there has been a history of, of parking signs before there were. Yeah, that's what we told you.
There didn't used to be no parking with tenants, or any of these tenants. So I'm trying to think that the precedence doesn't move ways. It's, it's, uh, they didn't have them for tenants, and they don't. I, I just think that resident parking is resident parking.
Yes. Yes.
And Laura Tyler, for our study, and I think that the difference is that there were never cones there previously, that said, no parking for tenants. It's just a sign that, so it's these skate, skateboard. So it's these cones that are problematic, she's feeling very empowered by these cones that can be randomly placed.
Yeah.
I know my cleaning lady, uh, she called the, the police, I, I, um, she parked there.
If it's resident parking, I think you'd get a visitor, you should get a visitor pass.
If you're best. I do now have a visitor pass, we, no one ever on the street needed visitor pass, now we do, I did get one. But again, it's the physical cones, that she's feeling very comfortable with, so those can be.
Yes, please.
Yep, so I'm looking at, uh, I don't think anybody deliberately is parking in front of anybody's driveway, anywhere in town. It happens, it's a mistake, it happens on my street, and I'll ask someone to move it, and that's it. No, no controversy, no confluence, that's it.
This time, Mary, from side 10th Street. Um, am I to, are we to assume that once this mitigation sound is done, that we'll go back to eight o'clock opening to dusk? And that we don't have to lock it up?
Yeah.
Currently, private citizens are locking up, opening and locking the gates, with none of the other ports are open and locked. And just the pickleball courts, which we've been doing, or like I said, private citizens have been doing that.
I'm gonna go back to the regular route.
Right.
Yeah.
And then, and not locking. I, I don't, I'm not prepared to say what we will do, because if people show up at six in the morning, or continue to play through into the dark with their headlights, yeah, I think that's a different issue.
So I, I guess then, if, if that were the case, then who's the responsibility for locking that? Not right now, it's private citizen, right, and it shouldn't be that. I mean, that's, that's, it's, it's like any other park facility we have, we don't lock gates. I think it's, it lets, I, I think we should go back to what it's been, and go from there. And if there's a problem, one or two people called.
So, so, so the locking has really been a volunteer sort of thing, Cheryl, you have not been in the middle of it?
Um, well, yeah, managing it, managing it, taking that one something.
And people are assigned certificated, watching the evening or something.
Right.
Yes, please.
Yeah, um, Kitty Chippin, uh, fifteen over the trip, I just have one question for you. Um, this has been going on for an awful long time, and for, um, for me, it's really, it's really irritating to have somebody having this much power over our town, and I just wanna make sure that since, I think you guys have all been incredibly generous in trying to mitigate the situation, and I just wanna make sure that once the, um, the acoustics are installed, no matter what the level is exactly, let's say you're happy with it, that's the end of it.
From our perspective, yeah.
I think that we need to be assured that we, and I, we say, I don't, never played pickleball, though I'm not on the court. But I, I think that it's time to let the pickleball courts be used as they were intended, and not have been usurped.
Yeah, but my feeling on that is, um, I agree with you, and, um, first of all, there's been zero discussion about taking the pickleball courts away, so like, zero discussion, so take a deep breath. Um, however, regarding the locking on the gates, whatever, we're not the only town, um, dealing with this, right? Pickleball, no, it's just a unique thing that's irritating neighbors all over the country. So, um, regarding the hours, I, I agree, we should go back to traditional towers, but, um, ensuring that those hours are adhered to, whether or not locking the gates would, would help. Um, you know, I, I, I think I'm not quite given that up yet, just till we see what the soundproofing does, let's get the data, look at the data, see.
I, I don't, yeah, because there is, I mean, there are problems, however, I'm sure there are plenty of places that aren't having the problems. But looking at our community, the, the, the lack of problems relative to the very few that we've encountered. I just, I, I don't think it's right that we have to ask townspeople to be locking and unlocking, and I don't think that should fall to Cheryl, Cheryl's, I, we don't lock anything else. You know, other.
Yeah.
Um, yes, please, sir.
Uh, Jeff Song, San Lake Avenue, hope we get this camera, we go right to the police station. So if there's people on the, before or after hours.
Right.
I assume they're gonna take a ride down and see what's going on, ask those people to leave fast. We locked those gates last year for, I don't know, how many months, but then we did it even more, it was, it was fine, there was no answers. Every once in a while, something might happen, there might be someone that stayed on there, but very rarely. And somebody new took command, and a lot of people don't read signs, and it does say, eight to eight, or now it's nine to seven, but someone will go on the court, and they, sometimes they go on the court just to stretch, but we've discovered so. These normally block on the court, because if someone goes on to stretch, they'll get a phone call, there'll be a complaint. So we try not to let anybody on there until the starting time.
Is, is that camera still operational, that, okay, the.
Yeah, I mean, that's the responsibility.
At, uh, point of recommendation, Mr. Shepherd, for.
Bill Sherg, over there. Being in the field these leagues over the past year, my observation is that the tail is riding the dog. Town has stepped up backwards to respond, block the game, to all of the issues with the sound and parking rule. At some point, must have, and say, we are done with this. If you are not pleased by the claim, then we will see your court, it'll be done with it.
Um, Becky Walker, but I'm an Essex City resident, but I go to Manchester High, and I'm friends with Mrs. Edgerton's son, and, um, I know you guys touched on the blocking of her driveway before, and there was an incident with one of my friends about that, but, um, I had a similar incident where I fully, with respect to homeowner, I parked in front of her house just to play pickleball. Um, not in front of the signs, as a self-border, so I parked farly away from the sides. I walked out with the pickleball case in my hand, and, um, this neighbor pulled the sign out and, like, verbally attacked me, took a picture of me, and then I soon went and called the police. Um, over, parking in front of my friend's house, which I asked him for to do, and fully just, like, attacking a young man going to play pickleball. And, I mean, I could have been doing anything, I could go for a team dinner, like I said, I could go hang out with him for an hour, but just because I was playing pickleball, that doesn't give me the right to be, you know, attacked for parking full where I was, you know, allowed to be, and, you know, accessible to me. And just because she has these signs, I don't think that gives her the right to attack others, just because she doesn't believe in parking on a sidewalk, I mean.
But no, parking on the sidewalk is distinctly not allowed. Yes, please.
This time, Mary, from side 10th, I just wanna give you an example of the respect that the pickleballers do actually have. I'm one of the people that closes gates up at seven o'clock. And last week, I went to go, I was, it was five or seven, and I was going by to go close it, all the courts were full with people. And it was, I was a couple minutes too early, so I spun the beach, by the time I came back from playing the beach, all, all court were empty. So my point is, the pickleballers knew to get off and leave by seven o'clock, so that showing respect. That's why I just wanted to point one.
Thank you. Um, are there other comments? Yeah, really, really much, what's the, 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 they want the sound, that's, you know, when, of course, you're in heavy use. Um, before the sound mitigation is put in, and then another test, also heavy use, um, when it's done. And that if the reduction is not what the company has promised us, we will.
I think we have former data already.
No, we do not.
Of the, of this company?
Yeah.
I think that's what Cheryl. So, so that it's the same equipment.
That's nice, okay.
Yes.
So if we could just add it to our actual, the June meeting, I think, the city could review this.
So they're, they're on schedule to come out here, and you will maybe even see before, or put up the.
Okay, I think we can move on. Oh, they are, I agree, yes. Oh, I'm just. I, I suggest that we separate.
No, you can't, no.
Those doors, that, no, no, no.
Thank you, Becky.
It's an open meeting, we're not allowed in cases.
Okay. Yeah. Order the sound mitigation.
It's all been the same stuff.
Change, the more they stay the same.
Oh, same thought.
Right. Um, do you need anything pulled out of the consent?
I was just, oh, sure, fine, let's, there's a problem with the citizenship award, but I think we can deal with, uh, the, the citizenship award is on the same day as our next select board meeting with, um, the planning board and the task force.
Yep.
Um, so, yes, we'd like, I'd like to take some of these items separately, and, and let's, let's take the longevity bench now. So, what would you like for us?
Well, um, I have submitted a proposal for another bench at, uh, Coach Field, um.
Field, 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 field.
Field, field, oh, field, field, right, um, for another bench aligned with the high enough bench, um, over the building, the playing field, and so we'll have the owner who wants to, um, place a bench there, and, certainly, it's not it's not space to have them on, but, I prefer. So that's the request that some town may, um, it is, uh, we feel very advantageous to have for someone wants to get out of their car and sit on the bench and watch the games, um, right in front of the handicap space, so it'd be a short trip to get on the bench. And, uh, and that's really it, actually.
I'm going to approve longevity bench as presented.
Second.
Is there further discussion? Becky?
Yes.
Happy, you have a great one. John?
Yes.
I say yes, and thank you very much for what you're doing, and I hope your walking tours are going well.
Thank you.
Yes, they're good, it's, um, this is.
Again, man. Over and out.
I want to tell you that the bench from the high school is sold, um, Brian Aitken.
Right, right, football field, yeah.
Yeah, and, um, I'm going to arrange, uh, a walk with the kids from class, um, really officers from the class, please, right there. Um, around the bench, and I would like to invite all of you, so I'll, uh, pray to let you know when that's gonna happen, and she'd come and be in if I do want to.
Thank you.
So I'll give a, say my copies and go.
Who gave you the props?
My, my, I have, I, I would near place to go, I mean, I didn't mean that, but, I mean, they're pretty, um, comfortable. I don't know if they're very, or used, French, but, I know that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, please. Black Earth Contract, of any motion.
Right.
Uh, recall, we had discussions, the Black Earth, certainly, they're decided to put a couple of structures on top, a little bit like, uh, the, 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 uh, people shared during the office, you know, um, and, from that, when I was requested, we need to, us, we negotiate with Black Earth, we're defining the cost. So, now that's a back to the point, um, the proposal is to report, make a amendment to the contract, and reduce the, the price of, like, fifty, like, from fifty thousand to thirty-five, and then stepping down to zero, and wanting to increase. So, I think I'm just, you know, to compromise the agreement, you know, that, uh, there's, available to that, of the, the motion, go ahead, thanks.
Yes. Yes.
Big screen as well, it's okay.
Sandy, unmute yourself. Go ahead.
Yes, Sandy, go ahead.
She just unmuted herself, so she's there. Sandy, if, if this is about something that we discussed earlier. Unfortunately, we have moved on. If this is. Okay, fine, thank you, Sue. And, and who puts the chat can't yet be logged. We will read whatever she puts in the chat. Yeah, so, okay. No kidding.
All right, I can make the motion in the interim. It's on the table.
Yep.
But I'll move in select word approve a modified contract with Black Earth for the lease of the old land.
Second. Any discussion? Becky? Kathy, yes. Anne says yes.
John says yes.
Okay, fine.
So maybe just all of our volume that we have.
Okay, good, but we're working on it here.
Uh, so you pick me up there.
You know what?
He's not.
Oh, sorry.
That's top law.
Okay.
Okay.
Um, energy aggregation. Vendor selection.
So we had two firms, um. The proposals, as you may recall, they are very similar. Uh, their proposals by law, they charge the same. One tenth of one's. Cent, one cent, ten percent control one hour charge. And that's, that's fixed. Uh, some slight advantages to the one firm colonial. The recognition we go with. And give ready votes in term of the two. But speaking with our primary document, the, the. They were more comfortable with.
Okay.
For the, for those.
What are the options being provided for residents?
So we don't have that set yet, so that would be part of the process.
We have to select the vendor first.
We will walk us through theories and choices. And options, and then we'll solicit quotes from our sources. And then you decide when to. When to sort of pull the switch, you will, you say, let's, let's lock into that this room.
All right, I moved that the board into a contract with colonial power for new electrical aggregation program for residents.
Second.
Ready, ready? John?
Yes.
Anne says yes, Kathy, yes, Becky, yes. Okay, um, book launch update.
So the, the short story on it, we, um, finest. I've been working very hard and, uh, the last I heard, we had said before paid subscribers. I don't know if that pinched up a couple as that. Uh, we had those stuff before as we do. The target was seventy-eight, but he's met your, your goal. And, uh. I am ready to keep working hard to pull everything together. A couple weeks later, we call that. I find a lot of chariot.
Uh, no, you, you hit it, the nail on the head, Greg. If, uh, this, if we're good to go, then. I will start tomorrow immediately, the process of getting those, uh. Launches legally in the town's name so that we can legitimately operate.
I move that the select word proceed with the launch service.
Second.
Further discussion?
With the clarification, since it's a new service, I do think we should take the action to review the operation and the financials. Play up the revenue timeframe before we, you know, get too deep into the budgeting process. If we get to add that to the action, let's study. Thank you, Byron.
Thank you.
Thank, thanks to, uh, everyone who participated in this, uh, process.
Yes. Motion, we have a second. Becky?
Yes.
Kathy, yes. Anne says yes.
John, yes.
Excellent.
Thank you, Byron.
Thank you, everybody. Have a great rest of your night.
I don't know what we're going to talk about, put aside pickleball and launches.
Yes, something will come up. You know this to be true.
I'd take a nap.
Good idea. I'm retired. Okay, the next item is the quarterly review of the, uh, town administrator. So you have given us a lot of information.
Yeah, uh, that is, I'll write quickly on the city. The budget finalizing, the town's heating laws, heat up, ready, I'm very focused. Finalizing negotiations with the, the patient is also part of that effort. We've had a heavy lift for launch, but simply others did. So that all progressed. My thoughts on meeting went well. The turnout, the discussions. Accepted to the proposals, I think is a credit to. All of us have been able to present. But all went well. With the stamping front, things have run pretty well. Challenge of conservation area, trying to make that view of it work well. Okay, so the video. Lots booked out. And so we continue to, to do that. It looks like we'll be able to bring on board a new firefighting team, which is for the train. Which was, it's nice. Hit the ground, uh, hit the ground running, without having to go, you know, either one of them kept. Really a big help.
Yeah.
So based off that. We do have, uh. The deputy hiring position advertised.
Any, any feedback on that at all?
I've got some weak candidates. So we're hopeful. And we'll, we'll get successful there. Judicial candidate, so open. But that's progressing and also getting. Feedback to solicit for the hiring position. Staffing positions, DPW. Moving ahead with the placement laborer and also moving forward with that political works position. Headover position. And they give those strong candidate. Then they, they've been up a lot more through that. So that's, that's going to be open. Uh, looking ahead, I would say certainly, uh. It would be tied for board retreat workshop session, identify some new set of goals. Trump should have been dispatched to here. Something that'll be important. We'll be sent to by Becky. And they'll bring you out a new, new board member. So that'll. Allow an opportunity for refreshing training and new training. So I think that's the fourth piece of moving forward.
Emma May, I just got, did anybody else see that about onboarding new board members?
Yeah.
This one.
Yeah, yeah, and I, I just wanted to make sure that that was.
It's not just for you, it's for you.
But that I think is a really, really helpful. One of what they offer, what's a misalord. Program that they offer that's very helpful.
They do have the new, uh. Blackboard handbook, they have that all online now. Let's continually update it.
I'm seeing that, I've emailed a couple of times.
Yes. Sitting out and sort of backing up the, the process for the buyer council.
Yes.
Important conversation to have, just looking at the calendar. Identifying some biosnorts that you want to make your readers. Just hearing a little bit more about how we would like to handle this process.
And I think we would like to hear using the process should be managed.
Yeah, definitely get some suggestions.
Sure.
And what is your, um, anticipated retiring date?
Uh, so, um, when did you launch?
Not this.
Not this, your, your phone.
Right.
Has, has anyone been advertised at all?
No.
Or have you anything in-house possibly?
So we had talked to a few folks in-house. And there has been some expression of interest, which is agree.
Yeah.
Uh, we have been, um, making sure that those people who have expressed interest, they've been going to some. In the workshops and training sessions. And, uh, have been involved with some. Last round of negotiations, for example. Put them in to be applied to this luxury.
More than one, more than one team members might be interested?
Um, initially, yes, I'm not so sure.
So, yeah, I agree with Anna, it would be interesting to, uh, understand what. We, the process would be. If. Not multiple in, in candidates in-house. I think we should be very cautious about someone feeling that they got the job. And the reason I say that is because of the hearing stuff, and I don't like that at all. We've always talked about succession planning as giving someone an opportunity to develop and an opportunity to compete. So if there's only one internal candidate who's interested. Then by definition, I would expect that you would also solicit candidates from outside, right?
But I haven't to.
I've always assumed that.
Yeah, I, I just am a little worried about what I'm hearing. I don't like what I'm hearing. And, um.
Even if there were three internal candidates.
Right.
Still have to.
We, yes.
I, I've always assumed.
Okay.
Do a lot.
Right, so I, I just mentioned that because, you know, I'm not in this building every day and I'm hearing stuff and I think just that really bothers me. I. I do think that for the people or person who may be interested in the role. Um, I do think an important part of. You know, learning is getting in front of us. For. In a capacity that may be not directly related to their. Or discipline, you know, sometimes people have a side project that's not part of their day job, but I just, um. Don't underestimate the power of, of. Someone taking on a little responsibility outside their core and presenting that information. So I just.
In regard to the retreat. I suspect that we can bet the ability, probably get the hot tub available. I won't be on the board while I'm happy, but I will be in any way. I would be. I would be happy.
It's heavily for. It's heavily for.
Yeah.
I wish for it maybe twice. It's, it's, it's handicap accessible. Um, there is parking at Club's point. Yeah.
Yeah, that's right.
I assume this would be a weekday and, and, um. Yes, it's, it's a. A practical location.
I might even tend as, as a member.
And it's an open.
Yeah, it's open, it's an open meeting. Yeah. I should probably check. And see with, where I think we're thinking about late June. That's what press. He's, he's keeper of the, isn't he this year? Keeper of the calendar?
So this, uh, you know, given your date. This will be a decision, this is the most important decision in the next year for us.
It's a bigger than the capital stuff.
All right. I mean, I, I saw the summary you put in there, not only in terms of what has happened over the last nine or six months or so, but. I think it's a good roadmap of what's going on forward. We've learned over the last couple of months that you can do your job with one arm tied behind you.
And then some.
But we do that.
Yeah, we don't want this to be a Mac Jones situation, a Mac Jones situation, but replace it. It's like, you gotta. Gotta find the right person, but understanding that, um. They will probably do things differently. That's okay. It's gonna be hard for anybody to walk with their shoes, I understand that.
Well, that's okay. I think the limitations, yeah. Will. Become very quickly evident. In terms of their. Town managers.
Yeah, I mean, you've been around for a long time. Town managers wind up on that slot. Yes, lots of different backwards.
Or town.
Yeah, you just kind of wound up in the slot because of set of circumstances that the town you're at. I, I guess it does. Yeah, it's, it's going to be, uh, ventured for us. Out there.
It, it all depends who's looking at the time. On the circumstances, existential situations.
And again, I'll say it again, I say it every time, we're a wonderful town, wonderful people, we're always scared when there's an opening and we tried some great ones. Externally, it seems, right, so.
Well, you made that decision.
Well, there have been a few from.
Greg, one thing in your note, um, that you mentioned, um, was about the budget process and how. I, I couldn't make any more.
I just, I just would encourage us to take a step back, bring the, put down the fire and. And just. Start with, go into this conversation about the process again. We, we spend an awful lot of people hours, um, um. Relatively minor issues.
And your point that it is. Select board proposal. It's not income proposal. So I think that that's also something that needs to be. Strongly taken consideration.
Well, I think, you know, in a private company, the way this would work is you have your financial planning and analysis team. Take a look at your revenue, right? Take a look at your big expenses. I think the improvement that was made this past year. Around all the capital planning at one time, that was. Around all the capital planning at one time, that was a very positive development in that sense. But now we need to, you know, do that for the revenue projections, do that for the, you know. And you're putting a bunch of rocks in a bowl, right? You put the big rocks in first and then you see with a little water, uh, you know, that you can fit in there. Um, that, that, we don't do enough of that. We, we as a board, I think, need to set some boundaries. Oh, we only want the budget to go up by this percent, you know, based on revenue and the big investments. We want debt to be this. And then the operations teams will figure out what they need and don't need. You know, we're, we're too much, too much micromanaging is going on at the operational level. I see that at the finance meetings. It's, um, and then.
To, to the judgment of the first, not looking at the big rocks.
Absolutely, yeah, absolutely. We, we have to focus on strategy, the big rocks, but that includes, I would say. Looking at not just the rate. We talk a lot about the rate because that drives what goes on the ballot, that you need an override, okay? This year, the budget did not go up by four percent. It went up by like seven. If you include everything that. That we're gonna put on taxpayers' shoulders, right, at the beginning, the exact number that's.
For any exclusions.
Yes.
A lot, a lot. About too big.
Right?
But, you know, above.
The skull and the bone.
Right, so that matters, okay?
But one of the ways, you know, checks and.
Yes, I understand, but I, I, I think, once again, I'm just going back, you know, in a private company, you wanna know the, the total that is going up. We don't talk enough about that. I was a little disappointed that that wasn't made clear initially at town meeting, eventually it was. But we, we spend too much time talking about the rate. The rate is just how you distribute costs, okay? Let's, let's start talking about, if nothing else, the total number. What do we want that to be? And, and it might be helpful if we, you know, we understand what it has been. I mean, I can go back to the finance boards and. Put together a little graph, but I, I, I think my one ask is that we spend more time at the high level. Working on the big rocks and understanding the total ask of the taxpayer, not just what fits into the two of them.
You have a budget review, it just goes line by line. I, I don't care what the number is. Go through every line item.
Right.
Maybe, or it'd be some number below which, we're not looking at that.
That's right. But you have, we have set the boundaries to be able to do it now.
I know what that number is.
And that will also drive operations. Both to say, you know what?
Yeah.
I guess I don't need to do that, right? There's no real incentive for people to stop doing things when the boundary, your upper boundary is not clear.
Yep. There's just a few things that will make a difference. Yep, rounding five hundred bucks. Who doesn't think you have some?
I keep making little gasping noises because I've been. I was first on finance committee, big nineteen ninety eight. And it's always been.
So.
People understand smallish numbers.
Yeah.
The big numbers.
Well, it's hard. Yeah, it's just hard.
And, and people talk about stuff that they understand.
Mm-hmm.
And if you have a suggestion for how to make, yeah, I don't, I don't think it is up to the select board to say. We will raise taxes by a little more than two and a half percent. And then, and then have everybody else work, figure out how to do that.
I, I agree, but I think we need to, and I, the two and a half percent, you know, that was just the law to provide some guardrails. Okay, that's, that's what it is. But my, my concern is we focus too much on the two and a half percent and not the total number. Because really, when I get my bill, it's gonna be seven percent, not the four point one or two and a half, like said, right? We don't focus enough on that top number. The town was very generous this past time. It was very generous. And I just don't think we can force seven percent every single year.
I, 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 I question here seven percent.
I, well, it includes the exclusions.
Yes, it does.
But, but, but the first, the, the debt exclusion doesn't come on this year.
So, yeah, I'm just reading, I, and like I said, I found that on the tablet with me. It, it, there was a number in there, seven percent, so.
The operations.
The operations. Yes. And that's.
Forget it. Those two staff.
Right, and I'm not saying that something is bad or good, but I'm just saying that if we look at the same, decide what the metrics are that we're going to look at year over year over year. We can project a trend and, and make some decisions. Hey, that's gonna be a really tough year. Twenty twenty seven is gonna be a bad year.
We need to.
Coming in for putting, putting that. Well, I'm just making it up, you know, but I'm just saying.
Wait, what is that number in our plan? The whole of a fifty million dollars?
Those should be set down. You, when you come up with a method for doing that. It, it, if it's. Down in ways that it can be applied every year rather than so that it's not being reinvented by the next group.
Yes, and, and I think also, um, so it's the, you know, it's not just the big rocks, the big investments and stuff like that, but, um. It is the continual improvement of our infrastructure. And I'm not just talking the big facilities master point in, right? But, but we have a lot of infrastructure and it all needs to come together and it still feels a little disparate, um, financially. There's some big rocks in the operation. So, I just. Every year it's improved and.
And I think there is a very big distinction between what you commit to spend and then what you actually spend each year. You make a lot of commitments.
Yeah.
This past year. But a lot of this, as you say, Anne, a lot of it is gonna hit right away.
But that's what we need is to, you know, this decision that this year and. Have thought it outside, I think, is a way to do it.
But I would hope that the select board doesn't have to spend a lot more time working on the details of the budget.
Right.
Um, you, you, you were saying that it's, it's our budget, which it is. But we have a finance committee which is supposed to deal with, um, putting it together. And, and, and reviewing what the operations and, and capital request. I don't want to do that here.
I, I don't want Catherine to be saddled with my comment. That was, that was my comment.
Well, they advise us. That is their, right, you share your responsibility to advise us. Um, as, as a CFO would advise a business president. I mean, that's, that's how that works. But, um. When I sit in, in the FinCon meetings, there's a lot of, the operational discussion. That I personally would rather see FinCon focus on the big rocks as we're talking here. And I do think the select board needs to provide them with some guidance as to what we would like to see, you know? And it's, it's, you know, we don't wanna have the discussion on every single line item in the budget. But we, we do wanna set some operational boundaries to get a first draft, you know? And I, and I also do think that we could consider as part of the process, having some type of public forum on the high level. If we start talking about some big rocks at the beginning of the process. Perhaps we get some feedback from the residents, so they're not getting information, you know, a week before kind of meeting. You know, they, they don't, it, it's hard for a resident to really understand what's in that budget till they get that pamphlet. And it's, by that time, they really don't have the opportunity to provide, provide meaningful input. So I'm wondering if we could find a way to have a public forum or a Q and A session at the beginning of the process. Get some input. Hey, we're thinking of this and, you know, this much debt is high level, you know, what do you think? You have ideas on where we should invest or, or, or cut? It just, it feels like everything is rushed and too late.
As my. Like, experience in much of your town meetings is that there were a lot more holds. In this year? No, many years. Right. In the last four or five years, maybe it's you, Greg, but, um. Um, we could be, we could count on having hold on most of the trucks, police cars, ambulance.
They're very.
You know, and, and that's the stuff that, we're dealing with forty million dollars here. I got a question about ten thousand.
Yeah, 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 yeah. But what?
Fire trucks, that's a lot of money.
When I, well, sorry. When I hear of the chasers, I mean, it's.
Yeah, twelve thousand dollars.
Well, but.
Guess what I can say is, it used to be even worse.
Yes, yeah, yeah. Well, I mean, you, you definitely have.
Well, that's a sign. I'm not sure what's a sign.
Well, I think it's a sign.
It's lost interest or, hey, who's it gonna rate?
I, I've spent a lot of time recently talking with people who think that too few people in town are making decisions. In town. And a town meeting, I mean, that's, um. And, and they come up with, well, unlikely sick, and, and, and it comes about maybe a hundred people. The other two thousand, I, yeah, are loosely happy. They.
Yeah.
Or they would show up.
Right. My, I.
I'm not saying we should pat ourselves on the back this far.
So you're.
But, um, I think on the whole, not only the town meeting, but towns.
Yep. And we're pleased with you, Greg.
Yes.
Very successful, sir.
Very.
Okay, um, I think. With the remaining, so we have readers on updates. Um, I, I did not attend the last planning board meeting. Have one next Monday. I'll attend that. Marnie, I have a weight binding meeting. I think that the next meeting will be getting on that. Um, I think everybody needs, here, here we are with board as hell. But even also.
Is that where?
Just quickly on that, they will have their water theory, um, obviously. Uh, they're proposing, uh, purely nature rebrand of, of the regulations. Of a, an issue of, uh, imposing restrictions on irrigation. Backing away from the land day, they're making a recommendation. And people have the, the same restrictions that like the fellows that are on here. Just for water, um, the requirement, um, the new testing regimes or only be for new wells. Who exist.
Regardless of use.
Regardless of use. We, if, so those are two big, two additional, it was, over the two people.
Are they, they're working, are they working on a database to figure out where all those wells are and what they're used for?
Yeah, we, we talked about the.
And it's outside of the, well.
Right, yeah, you're.
So that's.
Um, yeah, I mentioned this the last time, so especially again, usually mentioned weight binding. The downtown improvement from the committee, the, um, so the weight binding is a subset, subcommittee on, on downtown improvement. Uh, there's also another subcommittee that, um, feels that there's too much signage in the downtown. There's signage flutter. So, um, a couple of them were gonna make some recommendations to the select board. So I suggested if, if they get on the agenda, let's do it at the same time as the weight binding, you know, we do. See the weight binding recommendations and then hear from the people that they've reached the three sides and discuss it all at once. So, um. So that's still. Yeah. In June, because that all has to be done by the end of June, the weight binding.
Didn't we ask for, um, in June on that, Greg, do you remember?
Seventeen seventeen.
Okay.
So.
Um, gosh, John.
Just a, a couple of things. I shared with the folks in the Friends Council on Aging that. The money raising activities associated with the senior centers, some people have to start thinking about.
Mm-hmm.
Because it will really center on them. And, uh, and there, I think needs to be some sort of a fundraising advisor or professional fundraiser that's involved. They acknowledge that. So that's something that, um, that they're, they're not conscious of. Don't have to deal with it.
What, how much like?
They're, they're the ones that are really gonna have to raise the money. And I think they'll have to do that on their board. They'll have three or four. People in a committee plus a trustee or a lone two trustees, so they'll have to have a trustee. And, you know, have a, a fundraising advisor who'll pull together a story.
So how would they construct this question?
They have eighty thousand dollars.
Okay.
And discussion.
Okay. Uh, question on that though. So where does the negotiation stand? Because we can actually have a, um. The town meeting approved the appropriation, but.
Oh, yes.
We have to, yeah, they have to purchase, but don't we have to approve the actual contract?
Yes.
Yes. So when is that? We have a time frame as to what should start that.
Um, we think now basically this week, something we talked about, really tried on, and the projection the next couple of months.
Yeah.
Looks like, looks like there was two months.
And that really, I mean, that all has to happen fiscal twenty five anyway. Okay. And let's see, I can speak with Chuck on the pilot. Pilot is going along pretty well. He's had some feedback. I think everybody was copying on some of that. Maybe, maybe all of that, he's gonna run that probably till September.
I'm just hearing you about.
Okay, maybe not. I don't know. So you metered. And he went, he sent an email to, uh, all of the pilot people, I guess about, say, a week ago, ten days ago.
Work with that?
Yeah, I can't, in fact, it was forwarded to me. I mean, I think he forwarded it to me. So, and, and the responses are fine. I think one thing that kind of comes out a little bit is initially you look at it with the apps and everything. Now, after you kind of know where you're at, you're not looking at it. Or maybe if, except maybe you'll look at it once in a while, but it's, it's, there's a novelty to start with, but unless things are really wacky. You know, after a while, you know, deal with that. And, I, I mean, there are a couple comments, feedback, feedback. I need to be, I need to be able to access my information and I'm happy accessing it on the way.
Or can you set parameters though, that if something changes?
And you indicate that. The town will have those for everybody. So if you're not contacting us, and there's a part we're contacting you.
Yep.
Okay.
Nice.
So, so that's fine. You know, about, I guess there was a third company that had technology that was a little bit different. I'm not sure how it was that, they had six meters. They said, he was thinking about even putting in it. It's only for about three or four months. But it's an important three or four months. It's the summer. He, he might do that if he was thinking about that, because there were some people that did not get selected for the pilot. That are on his case.
As, um, as part of his business case on that, um, you know, we talked about the ports of conservation, but. And he estimated the amount of hours, labor hours saved by people not driving around in the truck.
Yes, we.
Okay, so that was a part of the story we really didn't tell him. And there should be big labor hours saved there and what, where are those labor hours going? Maybe used, or they'll be used for something else, but what is that something else?
Yeah. Yep. I'm done.
Um, the school committee took the second half of May off. Occasionally.
Did they say anything about the, um, comfort dog?
Their policy committee is taking on the comfort dog, um, that it, it came from the school of students. Just, just of students, but the students were encouraged in fact by the faculty and the administration. Um, and they just need to sort out, um. Their rather draconian no dogs policy and figure out how to deal with kids who have allergies.
Yeah.
Um, and, and that, that will all get worked out. I think one of the dog is still in training and, and during the summer. So.
So their date when that dog is supposed to be.
The dog is here.
On the job.
She's here, but not on the job.
Not on the job.
Uh, I think she's getting used to her new family right now and then. And then, um, in June, I think she goes for, uh, training at a facility that specializes in training dogs for, um, for, for residents. That should all be straightforward. Um, I believe that the school policy committee has worked its way through accepting hate advertising, um, on the field.
Oh, good.
And they're happy with that? Or don't know, happy? Um, yeah, pretty much. The medical, except.
Yeah, um.
If it takes some of the financial pressure off and, and, um, the athletic department isn't asking for, oh, that's, that's a good thing. Um, the, um, I mean, the task force. I think has finally settled down on the exact land, um, wow, geography. Uh, and Mark is working through, um, and I believe that the recommendation is that we will use the existing setbacks in the districts. Um, two and a half stories, um, in, except in Newport Park. Or I think it's, could be, I don't know, whether it's three or four, I think it's three. And, um, it's currently two, is it, or two and a half? If you're worried.
Yeah, then you said two points.
Yeah, yeah. It's setback from the, from the street. Um, and the, the, there's a strong desire to make it attractive. It has not been attractive for redevelopment. And there's a strong desire to see that it, it can be redeveloped. Um, because the existing situation where if you're on the second floor, you're walking upstairs. Um, it's, it's part of the themes that have to be good to, um, go out of it. The other is, is, um, Powderhouse Lane, same sort of thing, higher and denser. Both of those are higher and denser than the rest. Um, there is a, the LCD is about a seven acre parcel, which is currently a storage area. Um, I think, I think the Titan of there is, is, um, also four stories. But I maybe, I mean, it may be, it may be less, but the attention. And that will be, right now, that's limited to a hundred units. It, it, at fifteen per acre, it'd be a hundred and eleven. Um, but working with the design crew and, and, um, the numbers, it would be a more attractive area if it were a little bit less dense. So there's more density in Newport and, and Powderhouse. He's got the numbers working out at, it's about. The state wants five hundred and fifty-nine units, and I think we're at about five hundred and eighty. Which is, sounds very scary, except that there are two hundred and fifty units that currently exist in the area that's being rezoned. So in fact, the new units.
That might.
That might be. Well, yes, I'm sorry, that, that's been proposed for recent.
And what, what percentage is, uh, within the half a mile? I know the state wants forty, but we're well above that.
We're well above that. Um, we have seven acres outside, so thirty acres inside.
So that was thirty-eight and seven, so that's about a twenty, eighty percent.
Yeah.
So that's about twenty percent.
Yeah, yeah.
So eighty percent is within a half a mile though.
But what they, well, there's a strong advantage to rezoning small lots.
Right. Because anybody would agree.
Well, probably most of them will be just three, three, three units. Um, and that's a less huge change for the town than having one unit become three. It's different from having two units become fifteen. So that's, um, that will be presented to the planning board. I think we have a meeting on Fairness Day, but I'm, and the planning board will be there. And then it will, um, come to us and, and there's a date certain, I forgot already this.
Is it, was your first meeting in June?
Yes.
Was there a question of whether I, since the simple challenge, or is it review or what? Would you like to, well, you know, develop and have this negotiation discussion?
Yeah.
Yeah, they would be ready. I think they'd be ready.
That, that would be good.
Yeah.
Do you also keep track of, or the consultant keeps track of, what's happening in this thing? You know, I hear there are quite a number of towns that have voted and several.
I have been keeping track of, I know, on and on, but on Facebook page, it tracks that sort of thing. And the vast majority of towns have passed.
Okay.
There are, I think, four that rejected.
But they just rejected to be, because, because they're not the final at the end of the year.
Right.
They check as the first pass.
But, um, I, I think there are about thirty that passed.
Okay.
And I, I'll find that number and, and paste it.
There is, everybody in town will be curious.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
What's everybody doing here?
And interestingly, Rockport.
The Bass, I heard that.
And, um, it's Rockport, it's a group of citizens of orbiters. Um, I think the plan is in good shape. Um, and we'll see what the state wants to say.
I never hear anything from Beverly, but I assume their density is up there.
Yeah, Beverly.
And they're not doing, except say, by right, you know? So they've got, that's, it's pretty high, I think, too.
Very much so, yeah. But that's, it's no problem because it. No, no, they have no zoning.
Oh, they have no zoning?
They're working on it. They're working on it, working on that.
Could be any blank sheet of paper.
Yeah, they have, they, they have someone who's working on that right now.
Yeah.
But, but for now, for now.
Brown.
Basically, it's, Alan is starting to think about the fall town meeting. Um, where he is concerned that there will be four attendees that can fit in the cafeteria, cafeteria gym with him.
Is the intention to consolidate this vote within the, uh, right, work with the annual of the, of the fall town meeting, of seven meetings?
So far, the only thing that I know of that's scheduled for the fall town meeting is this.
Okay.
Is, is the. Would there maybe be some planning board things, or they? I think.
I don't, I, I think there will be.
Yeah.
Yeah, that, that.
There's a storm water, right, we did do a year ago.
Okay.
That'd be nice.
The goal is not to complicate this.
I, I would like it to be the only item on the agenda.
Yeah, yeah. Oh, there may be two parts to it, um, one being the regulations themselves and the other being the creation of a design review board.
But they're closely related.
They're closely related. And the design review board, I think, will bring some comfort to, um, some of the votes. Be hosted. So that's, that's where that stands. There'll be outreach all summer, um, going around to the organizations and any place else that they can get attention to. Explaining this one.
Okay. We found some news on, um.
Pull out, I intend D, the Adele, yeah, Quincy, and then do the rest of the conception.
Absolutely.
Yes.
You're up, John.
So, yeah, so we did, we did see, we're pulling out B. So I move the select board approve the consent agenda, A, B, and E.
And A, B, and E, right?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Okay.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay, it's, that says yes.
That says yes.
Okay. Um, the, probably the citizenship award is that it's on the twentieth, when everything else is happening.
Yes.
So I suggest that I'd be happy to write something and someone suggested that Tom Teo might be willing to present it. Or maybe someone from the school might like to, perhaps the proposer.
But where, where?
I'm not sure. This has a high. The high school.
Awards month.
It's an awards night.
Oh, okay.
It's, it's really not, I, I don't know. But, but I, I, I'm actually.
Twenty years.
I'd be a better.
Okay.
Idea than asking, um, we may not know.
We've done it before.
I did it last year.
You do it once?
I tried, yeah. But we have a meeting, so, yeah.
Yeah, so now it's somebody outside the select.
I think I would nominate the proposer. That would be my thought. And we can send over the, something.
We'll, we'll have a proclamation and, and if you remarks that, something.
The chair. I'm happy to do that.
Yes, it's nice to meet the chair. Okay. Uh, motion to, oh, John, sorry, it's yours. So we approve the, uh, approve the nomination of, of the recipient of the Adele. For the, uh, citizenship award.
Yes, okay, hoping to approve the recipient, I guess in documentation here, for the person.
Yes.
Adele or citizenship award.
Be presented by.
Represented by the proposer, this, this person. I don't know.
We don't need that.
Yeah, we don't need this, okay.
Second.
Yes, on, on the twentieth of March.
Okay.
Okay, John.
Yes.
That says yes.
That, that's your, that is, yes, yeah.
We'll get some technical difference. You're welcome.
Uh, yeah, we preview the, uh, the, uh, the, uh, the, the, the design chair. Very interesting exercise. Interesting concepts, uh, have a huge turnout for the evening kind of presentation. But, but between those who are competing for the feature, uh, the front steps, it's a good shot. Most people, these three things are impressive in the past.
Is there anything on Ronnie? Because I, I'm looking forward to give that person a view.
Uh, we'll, we'll get some, yeah, actually.
Sounded like a great.
Yeah, we did a really good job. It's creativity, you know, the idea is that we can do graduate over time. As things change, you don't have to do much at first, over time. So, in, in lots of sense. And it's, uh, it's just one of the, the, the issues that we have.
Those big locks.
Yeah.
Yes.
So, uh, we'll, we'll get some information, make sure things are, and they'll, they'll be coming to you, uh, in June to present the full report. This, the process, you know, the chance to see it again.
Well, but my slight concern on that is, I, I didn't get to the evening, but in the afternoon, there didn't seem to be a lot that was actually parking or preserving, um, the last one of our, that we were moving, introducing tech rooms and moving the parking around, but nothing that would affect the, the dangers of flooding or.
That, yeah, that discussion, we have, uh, and so they're, they're, they're reading, but the state will, it's, it's pretty, they have, it's a, yes, we have an existing C law. It will be allowed to shore up and raise, but if you don't have the C law in fact, um, you're not.
So, so we haven't seen, um, a long heartway, um, up to, well, there's rip ramp after, at, at the boat park.
I'm guessing, because not the right, uh, uh, the point, of the creek side.
Right.
And that's, that's what we're moving along with.
The, the other thing, I wish I had a tech, that I can do. Is to walk them around, someone at, at, when we were all standing out in the old rain. Because this is really the only park in town that's, and, and there are lots of parks. And lots of them are waterfront, and lots of them have tight rules and places and rocks. So.
Yeah, that's, they're, they're.
Okay. They, they, you go down the tax point and there's, there's, there's white beach. But this is not our only opportunity to get people to.
So my vision is, so beyond the chance to, to. So, but almost a good. elections are on the twenty-first of May. We're voting, in a couple of days, the first person early voting, so it's also voting mail. Some seven hundred voters have been, the crosswalkers are giving it by mail.
Wow, that's serious.
Yeah, this is, I want to tell you those who actually do it versus, I don't know what to say, but not many people.
That's the question, balance.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Probably not from the front, I mean. So there will be the, uh, there will be the valid questions as well, in addition to real, maybe what some decisions.
Into a jersey. Yes.
Right, like it is.
Yes, here we go.